That goes well.
Excellent. We have had some packet updates for today's work session, so you'll want to make sure you've picked that up.
Madam Chair, we are good, ready to go. When you are, we are just waiting for Commissioner Willie for a quorum.
Thank you.
Is Commissioner Rogers not coming today?
He is on vacation until tomorrow.
Oh.
I didn't know that.
I did not know.
Catherine. Chair and Tom, I'm just thinking, I'm trying to think ahead just a bit. Nafisa's not here, Roy's not here. I could get called away in my personal situation, so we would not have quorum.
Yep.
If that were the case for the board meeting. I just, you know, I.
If it happens, it happens.
Okay.
Whatever happens, okay.
All right.
Yep.
It just dawned on me that that, you know, I wasn't thinking about that before this morning, so.
Well, I. The rolling calendar.
I take that back. Madam Chair, we do have Commissioner Rogers for today.
Oh, good. Yes, we do. I need to look at October. Alrighty. Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 5th, Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. With me this morning is Vice Chair Pam Trees, Commissioner Jerry Willie, and Commissioner Roy Rogers. Commissioner Nafisa Phi is excused today. Want to first highlight that our work session packet has been updated. So everyone will want to make sure you've pulled down the latest as of this morning, at least. So particularly, we have some added draft letters and then a draft resolution and order was included for Item 5, which is on our agenda for this afternoon. Subsequent to this meeting, we'll have the Housing Authority Board of Directors and then the regular business meeting as well. So we have a busy day ahead of us. Alrighty, first item on the agenda. Oh, I would also like to comment. Congratulations to Erin Calvert, and thank you very much for your 27 years of service to us here in Washington County. We're just so pleased to have you here on our senior leadership team doing what you do so that we provide great service to our community each and every day.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so onward to Board and Leadership Communication. Is there a Commissioner who would like to go first? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
I will take Commissioner Phi's place as being first, since we usually chide her into doing that. Erin, did you have to have, like, you know, when you, when you're working before age 16, you have to have a permission slip or something there to work, right? So did, did we have one of those on file for you? Because.
You're my new favorite person. Thank you.
That is amazing. That is amazing. I had no idea, so congratulations. Yeah, so anyway, this past week, Commissioner Trees and I met with RAC and TVC to get a briefing on what they've been doing. And Pam, you can certainly fill in the blanks here, but it was a great meeting. It's always good to find out what our art community is, is doing and some of the events they've got going on. The, what was it, the singing benches or something, Pam? What were those called?
Was it musical benches? I think they're musical benches.
Musical benches, yeah, because the benches don't sing, obviously, but they're musical. Anyway, just, just great things like that that are around our county, and we can certainly share the locations of where those are. And, and they're going to move around in a few years, I believe. But anyway, just a, just a great opportunity to demonstrate our support to arts and culture.
Commissioner Willie, along that line, you might want to mention the fact that one of the ideas that we had was perhaps we can have prior to our board meeting or any meeting, while we're waiting, some pictures or some of installations, art installations around the, around the county displayed while we're, while the audience might be waiting. So we did talk that as well.
And during any intermissions, too.
Yes, yes.
And we talked about how possibly we could start to showcase some of our artists here in Washington County by having some of their artwork displayed in the county building or around. So anyway, just, it was a good conversation. And I appreciate Pam, you joining me, and it was, it was a good update from those two organizations. Also attended the District 8 meeting. That was very educational. It went, actually, it went the entire three hours. I didn't think it would, but it was good conversations. We got updated on what is, was Measure 110 and is now Senate Bill something or other. But anyway, we got a good update. And then I had a, the, it was the first time I'd sit in on a financial dues conversation. That was good to hear more information about that. And of course, our very own Commissioner Trees is going to chair that group next year, so congratulations. And thank you for your time commitment to that. I know it's in addition to everything else that you're doing, so thank you for that. Friday night, went to the Virginia Garcia Gala, Prospera 2021. It was just a great event. I haven't heard if they exceeded their goals for that event fundraising-wise, but certainly things on auction were going at a very good value. And I'd be surprised if they didn't exceed their expectations there. And then last night, joined this Cornea City Council with Stephen and Erin from LUT to talk about the MSTIP modifications and certainly the successes and the importance of city partnerships with the county on that, on the MSTIP program. So that's the highlights, and that's all I got.
I can go next.
Great.
Saturday, I, I sat in on the ESPD conversation, and I, I thought it went very well. I really appreciated Erin being there. Erin, we, we had the same question that we heard on Monday night about why, why are we doing this? Why isn't this just part of our property tax base? So we elevated Erin to a panelist, and she did a great job of explaining that one more time. It also came to mind, and I discussed this with Chair Harrington yesterday, that one of the Town Hall in Into the Future, the, the request was that there was a, a time for education around what the property tax can and cannot do, what are the limitations, and just kind of a, an education overview. And I, I think it's a great idea. Talked with the Chair about that. I'll be working with the Chair and with Tanya to see if we can focus a future Town Hall on, on that issue. The, there, there weren't a lot of participants, but I really felt that the conversation was intense and very good. So it was, it was well, well worth it, and I appreciated all the work that went behind, that always goes behind doing these types of things. So, so thank you. Again, as Jerry mentioned, we were, we met with RAC and the TVC group. And then on Thursday last week, we had, the Chair and I had a preschool-for-all meeting. We sat down with, with the, kind of the leaders of the group to understand what the next steps are, where they're going to go. And it was very beneficial for me. I think we're still getting information about where, when, and how we're going to bring the whole opportunity, if you will, back to this board so that we can have an open discussion. But just know that we are certainly working in the background and not intending to have board updates on issues that you're already aware of. So that's, that's important to, to both the Chair and myself. I have met with Shelley Castile. She's a constituent that's having trouble, a very difficult situation with a neighbor who is, in my notes from Megan, she says, "not acting neighborly." What that means is, you know, a lot of junk in the yard, vermin issues. And it's been an interesting experience for me to work through how we, how we enforce our codes and how, who in, in the different departments I deal with. So it's been a little convoluted, but we are, we are working through that. And it, like I said, while it's in, while the end goal is to make sure that Shelley's in a safe situation, it's also been an education for me as to, to how to proceed through this. I also met with another couple as a follow-up to CPO 7 meeting on Salzman Road. They have not been engaged in the Advisory Committee, but it's Marion Allen Dean. They talked about the impacts of the, of the West alternative for Salzman Road versus the East alternative. So it's, it was one more time that I'm learning from my constituents what, what the issues are that they face and what their perspectives are in relationship to those two alternatives. Yesterday, I met with Steve Zika, CEO of Hampton Lumber, about the ODF land management decisions. It's, you know, it's, again, it's important to understand all sides of every discussion. And he did mention that he would be happy to host a tour for any of the commissioners around a sawmill. And he said, actually, it's, it's really quite interesting. And he finally got Congresswoman Suzanne Bonamici out. And, you know, it's, this is not something that is her, in her priority list at the very, very top. But he said, once we got her there, it was hard to get, she, she wanted to stay. So it's very interesting. And I would encourage all of us to really take a look at what this means for Washington County from different perspectives. So, so that's my report.
Great. I think that leaves you, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. It, it's interesting to hear everyone's comments because it, it sounds like things have been dealt with a number of years, and we're getting familiar with them in different contexts. Probably the most important thing would be last night's Regional Act meeting. Three things that come to mind. One's the Interstate Bridge Update. Always interesting to hear about what, what's happening there. When you're dealing with 100-year-old bridges and interstate highways, it's always a lengthy process, so that was, was interesting. Also, and this would be for you, Gigi, and, and others on, on your group, they talked about the federal infrastructure investments. This is, I don't know what we're currently doing. In the past, what we always did is we had a whole pocketful of proposals that we had in hand so that we could implement those in the event that money came forward. And so it's interesting to hear what our state partners were doing. They are suggesting lots of grant writers on our staff get busy and that we become well aware of what needs to be done. Every bill, the infrastructure bill you hear about, the 3.5 trillion you hear about, has transportation money inserted. Plus, there's ongoing monies as well, so. That was interesting. It was also interesting to hear about the folks in the, our friends out in Clackamas County and Hood River County, what they're doing in transit and they call it around the mountain. They're pretty active, so it's, it's, it's great to see that what they're attempting to do. The Act was formed, as you know, we didn't have one here for a long time, fairly new creature so that there could be folks who were heard, particularly in rural areas of Washington County and Clackamas County. Hood River joined because they wanted to be a larger voice, and they wanted to have something that wasn't completely dominated by urban interests. And so it's, it is interesting. Had a lot of calls, continue to get calls, lobbyists and others on our tobacco ban. That's ongoing. I suspect that I'll hear lots more from, from those sides. That's an interesting topic to them. Had meetings with a few mayors about a variety of issues they had in their, in their cities. So that's it. It's just normal stuff, just a different year and a different day.
But isn't it nice to be getting and be immersed in normal stuff compared to a year ago? I will say, it's incredibly busy. We have a lot going on, but it's really nice to be getting back to more normal business, so.
Could I add, could I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Trees, you, you brought up a great point on Hampton, and that, there, at some point, Mark, I see, Jockers, I see you on the, on the line there. It, this is a very complex political set of hydraulics we're doing. It has a big impact on clean water in the dam and what, how valuable we find that particular facility in terms of costing and pricing in the event that it has to be moved. So there's an educational process by those who are interested in, obviously, certain timber interests. There's interest in the, in, by the Hampton folks, but there's also interest in clean water services.
You mean Stimson?
Stimson, what did I say?
Hampton.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two different companies.
Completely, yeah. Why I thought I had that, anyway. But Mark, you might want to brief people on it some point because this could be a very expensive love fest if we're not understanding all the implications. So I'll stop there.
Alrighty, well, thank you for that, colleagues. I'll just add that last week, Commissioner Willie and I met with our HR team to get cracking on the six-month review for our county council. So thank you, Commissioner Willie, for pairing up with me on that. Last Wednesday, I attended a very informative webinar sponsored by HBA and Metro on middle housing. There were great speakers, a couple of developers of different form factors, someone from the finance side of things, which, who also spoke about land division as well as condoizing. It was just very well done, good Q and A. We had some staff there as well, very informative. And I'd also like to ask Mr. Carr if in the future we could, if you and Ms. Angie could work to get a communique and/or whatever kind of training is appropriate for staff on our Oregon Public Meeting Rules and specifically to the obligations and limitations that we have on Board of Commissioners. There, through some staff briefings on different topics, there was a little bit of surprise that we have limitations on Board of Commissioners communicating outside of our normal meetings. So it would be helpful to, you know, we have a large agency, plus a lot of new staff over the last several years who may not have to live and breathe these limitations like we do. So no problems, just making sure that there's, there's a reason why we have to have these discussions in public meetings. There's, my handy-dandy technique is to remind myself, there's a rule of one, right? With five commissioners, I can only pick one other to talk to on any topic that we may be deliberating towards. So that's it for me. Before we get to leadership communication, if, or do you want to do it afterwards, the draft letters? Erin, what's your preference?
Good morning, Chair. I was just planning to do that as part of my update, so whatever's easier is at work.
Yep, yes, absolutely. So we'll turn it over for Leadership Communications to Erin Calvert.
Okay, good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. As I mentioned, I'm joining you today because Ms. Angie is at the ICMA Conference today. But in keeping with some of the regular updates that she provides, I do want to let you know from a workforce standpoint, we have three employees known to be off work in isolation after testing positive for COVID-19. One is known to be a close contact but is fully vaccinated and asymptomatic, so able to work. And then two employees are known to be in quarantine after being in close contact. And then, as mentioned, Chair Harrington, switching gears, there are two letters that were added to your packet yesterday. So the first one is the Time for Action Letter. Work Systems Inc. reached out to the Board for consideration to add the Washington County logo in support of their letter, which came to you via Erin Doyle. I know Erin is available if there's any questions from the Board on this.
Colleagues, any questions or your thumbs up? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, I, as I communicated to Erin when she met with me, I'm not a fan of putting our logo on letters that have like 50 logos already. I noticed Multnomah County and City of Portland were not on there. And I don't know why that is, because WSI is certainly right in their backyard. But that didn't have any impact on, I'm, I'm just not a fan of putting my logo on. I think our logo has more value than that, and I think it just gets lost, so I don't see any value in doing this. Just my opinion about value of logos.
Okay. Well, I saw that three of us were thumbs up on this, so there's the messaging that goes along with the letter. So we'll proceed with, with that one. Next, we have, go ahead, next memo.
Thank you. The second letter is the Draft Response Letter to the Latino Policy Council Regarding the Hillsborough Bridge Shelter Turnkey, or, excuse me, Project Turnkey. And as you're all aware, staff have been working with Chair Harrington and Commissioner Willie to draft a response, but that letter was added to your package.
Go ahead, Commissioner Trees. You're on mute, though.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Erin, I, I did bring up yesterday the, and I, I'm sorry I couldn't follow up with phone calls late yesterday afternoon. But I, I just want to bring up the fact that, given those, I think it's like 10 to 12 points that were outlined in the letter, several focused on enforcement issues, and I just wanted to make sure that the Latin Acts Advisory Committee within the Washington County Sheriff's Office has also reviewed this letter and is, is comfortable. I, and I recognize that there's a lot of crossover between the, the rosters, if you will, of the people involved in both. Say, I think it, it makes sense to me to make sure that they are informed as well.
I'm not aware that the Latino Advisory Commission from the Sheriff's Office has been, has reviewed the letter, but as you mentioned, there is overlapping roster.
And I also.
The letter was to us. So this is a response from us. The Sheriff Latino Advisory Committee is a committee that reports into the Sheriff's Department. Also, their point about public safety really speaks to the responsibility of the City of Hillsborough Police Department. And Sheriff Garrett is working with the Hillsborough Police Chief on that.
And while I understand, you're absolutely correct on all those points, I, I just, I just thought it would be wise to have a, a different set of bias on this as well, so.
I, I have a question as well, and this, Jerry, this to you. I, I know it's been particularly sensitive in your district, and is there, you're, you're fine with the language and the issues?
Yeah, absolutely. I worked with Sia and Emily last week and to, to make, refine and do some, some touching up, I guess. And yes, I'm fine with this letter, realizing that there are a lot of, several bullet points that was from their letter that we're going to be addressing specifically, just couldn't do it in this letter because it would be too voluminous. So yes, I'm, I'm fine with this letter.
As you might suspect, given that this project, the Bridge Shelter Hillsborough, is in Commissioner Willie's district and my district, we worked with staff to develop this proposed response for your consideration. Alrighty, so are folks comfortable with this being our response letter? Great. Okay.
Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners, that's really all I have this morning, other than just to provide a reminder that today, much like the projection toward the end of the year is a pretty full agenda and a full day. So I know we talk about this a lot, but sometimes just reminding everyone what's ahead is helpful as we manage all of this work together. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Alrighty. Mr. Carr.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. Sadly, I'm going to talk about COVID just a little bit. I'm trying to keep you up to date on the vaccination mandates. We still don't have anything from OSHA. I read that it may be the end of the month now that OSHA is expected to issue their orders. I had told you I thought it would be the middle of the month, but it's now looking more like the end of the month. We did get more guidance on the federal contractors requirement. It's very broad. It, it didn't specify which contracts, but it said, they instructed federal agencies to basically include all, the language in all contracts. Where we, that, that will start as of October 15th. People will be required to be fully vaccinated or have an exemption by December 8th, 2021. So our, our staff is reviewing all contracts for that language. It, it's broad enough so that if anyone who, who works in association with a contract, not just people who work on it, but back office people like lawyers and accountants, are also covered by the mandate under the federal contractors. So it looks, from my perspective, it looks like there'll be a federal mandate applicable to Washington County employees. It's just a question of whether it's OSHA or the federal contractors, and my guess is it'll be the federal contractors first. And so we're watching for that, and we'll keep you up to date on when that occurs. And in the background, we are working on procedures to implement that when it goes into effect.
Do folks need to be fully vaccinated by then or just at least first shot?
I think it's fully vaccinated by December 8th under the federal guidance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, and it is coming up, and we will try, we're, we've been briefing our Department Directors and staff, and we're working on, as I said, policies and procedures to implement.
That's only 10 weeks away.
Yes. Well, hopefully, people are getting vaccinated.
Yes, please.
It looks like Commissioner Rogers has a question.
Tom, when you say federal contractors, I suspect that would be anyone in the state and local government as well. Is that onsite or is that in their offices as well?
Both is the way the guidance came out.
So if, if we are contracting with a service, let's say, we'll pick on engineering, we won't pick on accountants and attorneys. But let's say it's an engineering firm, and they're working out, out of their office elsewhere and not having any contact, we're going to require that they be vaccinated as well? I'm trying to understand the extent of this, and your opinion.
Yeah, and, and Commissioner Rogers, the, the extent was the federal government seems to intend it to be very broad. And as you know, this will be a contractual requirement. It's not a federal imposition. It'll be a condition of a contract, and we will have to agree to it to accept any money we're getting from the federal government. And that will be true for a lot of, of government agencies and private companies, for that matter.
So is that only, I'm sorry, keep following up, is that only federal money, expenditures of federal money? Or we, we're using taxpayer money to perform certain services? Does that apply to them as well?
No, it wouldn't apply to taxpayer money unless it came through a contract. So it applies to federal government contracts, so anything, but, you know, query whether an extension of, say, ARPA funds, because we signed a contract, and they'll, they'll insert a clause, and the, the guidance that came out said that the government agencies should. And the guidance that came out said that the government agencies should insert those clauses broadly in as many contracts as they think is possible. So it will be a condition of accepting the money that we're getting from various federal agencies for various projects. And that's, thank you, that's all I had this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Duckers for Clean Water Services.
Thank you Chair Harrington, members of Clean Water Services Board of Directors. Diane is out today. She's at the World Water Technology North American Summit, speaking with the Water Research Foundation CEO Peter Grabat, who we met last year during our board training. On that note, we sent you an outline of our board training that will be in two weeks, on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday of the week of October 18th. On the COVID front, we're happy to say we have no new cases reported in the last week, although we do have one employee who has had primary exposure. And that's all I have for today, thank you.
Thank you. And with that agenda item discussion, we have our Housing Authority Board of Directors. We do have about five or six people who will be providing public testimony. So that meeting will probably go beyond the normal half hour or so, closer to 11 o'clock. Then we'll go into the Board of Commissioners meeting. And I don't believe we have any agenda changes. Are there any questions Commissioners have on any of those agendas? Go ahead Commissioner Willie.
Keep hitting the wrong button. Yes, I have a hard stop at 12 o'clock because I have an update with Northwest Act from 12 to 1. So I'm hoping that we can certainly be done at 12 o'clock. And then that Northwest Act lasts until 1 o'clock. So you may see me eating some lunch at some point in time during that time. But anyway, I just want to let you know I have a hard stop at 12.
Good thing we have four of us today, so we can finish out the meeting at least. So alrighty. So seeing no further board comments, we'll move on then to our second item for the work session agenda. That is the Tigard Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Proposal. And I believe we have some external presenters as well. So if we can make sure we give our board clerk the opportunity to advance all the appropriate folks. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Roberts, to introduce folks and take it away and make sure we've got everyone we were hoping to.
Great, it looks like we have everyone that we needed for this. And so I'm going to just go ahead and kick us off briefly. And I want to introduce Skylar Warren. Skylar is a senior planner with the City of Tigard. And he's going to run through a presentation on their proposed mid-cycle Irma Growth Boundary Expansion for the River Terrace 2.0 area, located along Roy Rogers Road between Schultz Ferry Road and Beef Bend. They were here in June and gave a preliminary preview of the concept plan at that time and are back now with what is pretty close to the final concept plan. And because the county is a service provider, considered a service provider for transportation, the city is seeking a letter of support or endorsement from the board where we would commit to provide the transportation service needed for serving this proposed UGB expansion. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Skylar. And I believe we also have Sarah Breakstone from OTAC, who's a consultant that's been working with the city on the project as well.
Good morning Chair Harrington and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Skylar Warren. I'm a senior planner with the City of Tigard's Community Development Department. And I'm project manager for the River Terrace 2.0 Concept Plan. With me here today, as Stephen said, is Sarah Breakstone of OTAC, who is leading our consultant team. I first want to thank you all for this opportunity to speak with you about the city's concept plan for these urban reserves. When I was last with you here in June, the board provided some questions. And today's presentation will be primarily centered on those questions rather than a full review of the concept plan. That said, if you have specific questions about anything in the concept plan, we can answer those questions if they come up. And I will pause after we just do a quick recap to offer that opportunity. And I will say, Chair Harrington, I was also in the HBA webinar last week on middle housing. And as you know, Mayor Snyder, City of Tigard, presented the opening remarks. And so I think you know from that very well, the City of Tigard's focus and dedication on getting middle housing into the urban fabric of our city as a means of better, meaning our housing equity goals, right? We want to make sure that everyone in Tigard has housing opportunity. And our concept plan for River Terrace 2.0 is an important part of that. Next slide. So I first want to start off with a reminder that we give whenever we are presenting these materials of the role that the concept plan has in shaping development. So it's important to note that this is only the first step. It's a very high level document that sets out a vision for how development might occur. It's used by Metro to make a decision about expanding the UGB. It guides future planning work but is not binding. And that's by Metro Code in the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. It actually has language that says it's not binding. And then, most importantly, all the work that you're going to see here is going to be further refined by the much broader and more fine-tuned community plan that will follow. And of course, once with that community plan, we will, you know, move into the implementation stage where we bring a new development code online that will provide the regulatory framework for this area as well as the nuanced funding strategy that will include supplemental system development charges or maybe even a reworking of the city's overall system development charge methodology. And of course, that isn't even the last step. The last step is when we get an application for development. Sometimes things are refined through the plan development process. Next slide. So just a quick reminder of the areas that we're speaking about. These are two urban reserves that are labeled one and two on here. They are contiguous with River Terrace 1, which is labeled as four there. It's kind of in that blue and yellow outline. Bounded by Schultz Ferry Road to the north and the City of Beaverton, of course, across that road. And then on the south, it's bounded by Beef Bend Road and the Kingston Terrace area of King City, which is their recent UGB expansion area. Of course, this is just south of Mountainside High School and east and north of the Tuolton National Wildlife Refuge. Next slide. Next slide. So this concept planning work was conducted with two co-equal lenses, climate change and equity. We'll talk more about how those factor into the final document and our findings later in the presentation. But it's important to note them upfront to emphasize that these are fundamental to the development of this concept plan. Each has had an impact on all areas of the plan, some in direct and observable ways and others indirectly and not as obvious. Next slide. So those lenses helped us as we built a project vision with help from our residents and city teammates. I won't read the entire project vision, it's fairly long. But here are some of the critical highlights that helped to understand how the concept plan was built. We want to ensure that we build a complete neighborhood for everyone. There are two key ideas there, that the neighborhood is complete, meaning residents can meet as many of their daily needs as possible without leaving their neighborhood. And then the neighborhood is for everyone, meaning that there is an opportunity to live and prosper here for people at all income levels and all stages of life. Part of meeting this goal is making sure that the transportation systems serve all modes equally and safely, including transit and newer micro-mobility devices. While not explicitly covered in this concept plan, the community plan that will follow will dig deeper into the electrification of the transportation systems as well as alternate forms of mobility. Another part of the vision for this plan is that there are lots of public spaces and parks that meet the community's need to gather and be outdoors. That's of course very important, as we've learned during the COVID pandemic. That element is of course closely tied with the goal to protect and enhance natural areas. By carefully interweaving protected areas and adjacent parks, we can foster connectivity with nature, buffer habitat areas, and increase the ecological legibility of the area. And of course, we wanted to make sure that we responsibly implement our infrastructure so that it is as cost-effective as possible, as this not only impacts the fiscal sustainability of the city and the other agencies that are required to upkeep facilities, but the equitable access piece as well, since infrastructure costs are passed on to new residents through fees. Next slide. I won't spend too much time on the concept plan map here, but I do want to just highlight a few items of interest. The concept plan includes three different housing typologies of varying levels of development. Intensity, with the largest forms clustered around commercial areas and the smallest forms at the edges. There are three areas of supportive commercial and employment lands that provide access to the jobs, services, and amenities needed to meet the complete neighborhood goal and reduce vehicle miles traveled. The transportation system is connected to existing regional and local facilities and would support fixed route transit service either along arterials or within the neighborhood itself. Trails are generally intended to be aligned with natural areas and offer a secondary connectivity alternative for non-motorized transport. Wetlands and vegetated corridors are protected to the maximum extent possible, with some wetlands identified as possible candidates for enhancement for stormwater management. Next slide. So some of the key takeaways from this plan, the things that we used in implementing both the project focus, those lenses that you saw, and the project vision. We knew that we needed a larger commercial and employment center in River Terrace West. We heard loudly from the community that they wanted neighborhoods organized around Main Street corridor. They wanted that Main Street to be balanced with an internal focus and with external connections. We wanted to be able to accommodate the tile flat road extension. We wanted all neighborhoods to achieve an average of 20 units per net acre. That's a doubling of what we anticipated in River Terrace 1. We wanted to make sure that the connection at Beef Bend reflected and connected with the town center in Kingston Terrace, which King City, of course, envisions a new town center in that area. We want to achieve our park's level of service standards, but leave enough flexibility for how and where those are implemented. And we wanted to include that maximum flexibility for transit service. Next slide. So in the last briefing that we had, actually, I'll pause there and just ask if there are any questions about the concept plan content itself before I move on to some of the items from the last briefing.
Commissioners, go ahead Commissioner Rogers.
I've looked at that, I've talked to your mayor and obviously developers who are in the area. But are you going to talk a bit about the extension of tile flat? That's a major commitment, obviously, on behalf of the county. And I think it's a great idea and it needs to be done. But is that part of your presentation today?
Insofar as it's included in the concept plan, yes. It's in the concept plan. It's part of the document, it's part of the map. And we've identified it as one of two special study areas moving forward in the community planning process. The other one being Beef Bend, because there are some items that we want to work with King City and county staff to make sure that that road is well-serving to the areas around it as well as regional traffic and balancing those things. So we've identified those two as critical special study areas to be focused on in the community plan.
So is that, just to follow, that's the extent of what you're going to say today? Or are you going to disclose, or maybe it's going to be Stephen does later, what the extent of the misstep commitment is going to be? Because those are, you know, tile flat alone is probably 30, 40 million, I'm guessing 50 million.
Certainly.
Yeah, so that's not part today or is that coming later?
Well, yes and no. We've developed a funding strategy for that. And I would say that it is at a level of planning that is the same as what came out of the Urban Reserves Transportation Study. We've identified that there is local cost share, regional cost share for that. And there may be some developer contribution to that as well. In terms of fine-tuning what the cost share would be and, you know, the final budget for doing that, we don't have that identified yet. That's one of the reasons that that would be a special study area in the community plan, because it requires some, a higher level of sort of study and collaboration between staff at the two agencies to be able to resolve all of that.
And Commissioner, I would echo a lot of what Skylar just said. And I do think what we would like to see probably in the concept plan would be a clearer commitment for the inclusion of the extension. And as Skylar noted, I think we have work to do to just, you know, continue to refine the cost share assumptions that are made in the concept plan. And as we get into the community planning, that'll be the opportunity for us to continue that discussion.
I'll just raise the strong likelihood that, you know, we have quite a transportation backlog for building via the MSTIP Transportation Funding Tool as one of many tools. So it may be, as you say, continuing to work and refine. It may be that misstep during the next five-year cycle is fully subscribed and won't be able to address the needs for River Terrace 2.0. And it will kick the can down the road. So we may continue to have a harsh reality. So working it, the bottom line could be, nope, don't have it. So bear of bad news.
Any other questions on the concept plan recap there? So I'll move on then to the, answering some of the questions that came up in the last briefing. So there were particularly some questions about the urban growth boundary expansion process and how that works, how it was different in this mid-cycle from a regular cycle. So I'm going to recap a little bit of that. And I know that, you know, some of this is going to be common knowledge for all of the members of the Board of Commissioners. But, you know, for the audience, broader audience, maybe it might be a primer on it. So the urban growth-
Just so you know, unfortunately, Commissioner Trace has had to leave our meeting today. And one of the reasons why, at our prior meeting in June, we asked about, just a little bit of a background on this, is the three of us who are here today are quite familiar with the mid-cycle requests. But our two members who are not here today have not had to deal with UGB expansion in a normal cycle, let alone in a mid-cycle. So, but thank you very much for your responsiveness. I know that they will follow up and watch the video from this meeting. So let's keep pushing through.
Thank you. And of course, they're always welcome to reach out to us for clarification on any of these points if they're watching this video later. So the urban growth boundary is managed by Metro. That process of managing the urban growth boundary is governed by state law and then Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, particularly in the case of- Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, particularly in the case of expansions of the urban growth boundary, titles 11 and 14. The way the urban growth boundary is expanded is that cities now apply to Metro for UGB expansion, and those applications to Metro are supported by a concept plan. So the concept plan that you saw the brief recap on is the support document for the city's application to Metro to expand the UGB to include these areas. And then service districts like the county would provide statements of support. Metro Council is the approval authority for that application. And then there's a last step in which the Department of Land Conservation and Development acknowledges the expansion, at which point it's complete. Next slide. So under the Urban Growth Management Functional Plan, there are four methods to change the regional urban growth boundary. The first is a legislative amendment. This is the process that you're probably most familiar with. It is the one that was utilized by Beaverton, Hillsborough, and King City in their 2018 applications for urban growth boundary expansion. This type of amendment to the urban growth boundary is undertaken every six years and is part of and supported by the process of updating the regional forecast and needs analysis. Next slide. The second is what's called the mid-cycle amendment. These amendments are undertaken every six years at the midpoint between legislative amendments. The city of Tigard will be proposing a mid-cycle amendment with this concept plan. I do want to point out there are also two other types of amendments to the UGB. Just to be complete, there are major and minor amendments, and these are generally parcel-specific additions that address a need for public facilities, and they're handled annually. Next slide. So that mid-cycle update differs from the legislative cycle in some important ways. They do not require a full update of the regional forecast and needs analysis, so in other words, it's relying on that forecast and any new information that has arisen that might suggest that we have a need for more housing. On that note, these expansions are for housing specifically and supportive commercial and other uses, civic uses. They are limited to areas of 1,000 acres or less, and that's across the entire metro area. We believe, I mean, pretty certainly that City of Tigard is the only city that is going to be applying in this mid-cycle, so we're well under that limit. And that areas are intended to likely develop in the next 10 years. Otherwise, all the same factors apply. Next slide. So another comment that came up in our last briefing was a need to understand the criteria for approval. So this is an important piece, and I'm going to spend the next several slides running through the criteria or factors the Metro uses to make a decision and talk about how the concept plan responds to those. There's a lot to cover here, so I'm going to go a little quickly. Feel free to stop me if you have a question. The first criteria is that the city has an acknowledged housing needs analysis. So the city of Tigard, like the rest of the region, is experiencing a severe and ongoing housing crisis. We know that as of 2017, the region had underbuilt by about 27,000 units, and home prices were skyrocketing. That trend has not abated, with home prices increasing 2% to 5% monthly for at least two years, and the year-over comparable sales in the metro region increasing 15% to 20%. This is coupled with rent increases that have been tracking far ahead of the Consumer Price Index for over a decade now. The lack of housing has created a massive downward pressure in the market and has exacerbated some disturbing housing inequities. A recent report found that 81% of US cities over 200,000 are more segregated in 2019 than they were in 1990. Further, rates of homeownership are 77% in white neighborhoods compared to 59% in integrated neighborhoods and just 46% in segregated communities of color. This is at least partially attributable to racist lending and underwriting policies in place for generations, which rated neighborhoods occupied by communities of color as high risk. In all, 83% of the neighborhoods given poor ratings were communities of color. This is a process known as redlining. You might be more familiar with it under that name. Next slide. So the city did perform a housing needs analysis update, and some of the findings from that are that currently, City of Tigard has 60% of its housing stock in single-detached houses. The median price of those homes in 2018 was $375,000. That's a low estimate that came from American Community Survey. We know that, based on what we're hearing from the Case-Shiller Index and other reports of home prices, that it's much higher. We have a very low vacancy rate of 3.4% in homes for purchase and rent. A survey of our residents found that housing costs are too high, and there is a need for more housing diversity. Cost is identified as the number one barrier to obtaining appropriate housing. Like I said, the rent increases have exceeded core inflation rates since at least 2015, and we determined that the city will need 7,400 additional units of housing over the coming years, and we currently have capacity for 4,200 units, leaving a deficit of approximately 3,200 units. Next slide. The next factor or criteria is that the plan contains all of the elements required by Title 11. You know, this is where we show that our concept plan meets all those criteria around the efficient use of public systems, that we are supporting pedestrian and bicycle travel, that we've provided a range of housing opportunities, sufficient employment opportunities, streets, trails, and public transit connecting to housing, well-connected parks and open spaces, protection of our natural systems, minimized impacts to rural reserves, and support from property owners and developers to build within five years or 10 years, as the criteria says. Next slide. So there was also a question in the last briefing about how we had coordinated the concept plan development with other agencies. We held several meetings of our technical advisory committee that included representatives from each of these agencies, and we also regularly held coordination meetings specifically with King City, Washington County, and Clean Water Services. I'm not going to run through this list, you can see it. We've got a pretty broad spectrum of other agencies who participated with us. Next slide. So the third factor that Metro will consider is that the city has demonstrated progress in developing its town center and regional centers with the types of higher-density mixed-use development envisioned by the 2040 plan. The city does have one town center, which includes both the downtown and the Tigard Triangle. There's been significant city investment into those areas in the past decade. They are both tax increment financing districts. We've supported a lot of major infrastructure projects and other development, like affordable housing in those areas with TIF financing. They are both considered plan districts in our development code. The Triangle is where we have implemented our lean code, where there is no land use approval process for most projects. They can go straight to building permit if they're meeting a code. And then our downtown code is specifically geared toward a more transit-oriented, higher-density development. Those are both vertical housing development zones, so providing some tax incentive for development there. And of course, we're looking at transit-oriented development and, like rail, with the Southwest Corridor Planning Project, and if that ever comes to fruition again, we will be prepared to take up that cause again in those areas. The city has one regional center, which is the Washington Square Regional Center. It's a plan district. It was last updated in 2001, and it's currently being updated. That plan is focusing on anti-displacement inequity as well as right-sizing our high-density mixed-use development and making sure that we have the right transportation connections and options in place. Next slide. The fourth factor is that the city has implemented best practices for increasing affordable housing, and I can confidently stand before you here today and say that Tigard not only meets this factor, but exceeds it as a statewide leader in housing policy. And I'll just run through some of the initiatives that we've taken in 1996. We were the second metro area jurisdiction to offer tax exemption for nonprofit affordable housing. In 2017, we offered a full SDC exemption, system development charge exemption, for affordable housing projects. In 2018, we adopted an affordable housing plan that provided a five- to 10-year guidepost for where we were going to go. From that plan, we followed quickly to adopt a construction excise tax for affordable housing in 2019. We adopted affordable housing incentive zoning in that downtown plan district. We adopted affordable housing parking exemptions in the downtown plan district. We adopted an expansion to our tax exemption program to provide a tax exemption for land banking. In 2020, we elected Community Development Block Grant Joint Entitlement to help fund affordable homeownership programs. In 2020, we also created a tax increment financing set aside for affordable housing in the Triangle, and we're currently working with a community land trust to roll out our first affordable homeownership down payment assistance program in 2021. That's supported by both CDBG funding and the construction excise tax. Next slide. So the fifth factor in approving a UGB expansion is that the city and its concept plan will advance Metro's six desired outcomes. These are essentially additional factors, bringing the total to 10, so I'm going to run through them one by one. So the first desired outcome, we can just go to the next slide, is that people- Next slide. Oh, there we go. Is that people live, work, and play in vibrant communities where their everyday needs are easily accessible. You heard at the outset that this outcome is met by the elements of the concept plan that we emphasized, the focus on a complete community that serves the everyday needs of its residents with commercial areas within a quarter mile of all housing, its development ready for, we believe, the future of flexible and remote work. The employment areas are intended to be mixed-use. The areas are well-served by parks and connected to regional trails, coordinated with the Kingston Terrace Town Center, and of course, we have a new elementary school coming online in River Terrace, and it's adjacent to the Mountain Side High School. Next slide. The second desired outcome is that current and future residents benefit from the region's sustained economic competitiveness and prosperity. The mid-cycle is a residential-focused UGB expansion, so we don't have a lot of economic activity really. These aren't heavily employment lands-weighted areas. So this takes on a bit of a different meaning. For us, the emphasis is on equitable opportunity for prosperity, and that comes with that complete neighborhood that reduces the cost of living. Diversified housing gives an entry point to wealth building, accommodating new modes of work, and a mix of uses in the employment area that encourage different innovation and opportunity. And that prosperity piece is really also part of our policy recommendations that come out of this, to make sure that we provide incentives and supports for both regulated and unregulated affordable housing, so market-rate affordable housing, making sure that lower-income families, communities of color, seniors have an opportunity to purchase a smaller home. Next slide. So desired outcome three is that people have safe and reliable transportation choices that enhance their quality of life. So first, we note that this desired outcome is focused on transportation choices, specifically in the context of an enhanced quality of life. So we recognize that there's a balance to be achieved here. This is reflected in the concept plan in multiple ways. We've incorporated a fully multimodal transportation system that emphasizes equity and livability. All modes were given equal weight across the system. We wanted to make sure that pedestrian and bicycle connections to destinations were made within the neighborhood and the wider region. We wanted to achieve a transit-supported development pattern and density with a focus on safety for all modes, connections for motor vehicles to the regional system, building and support for electrification from the ground up, and reducing greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled. Next slide. So the last one leads into desired outcome four, which is the region is a leader in minimizing contributions to global warming. So it's kind of hard to overstate how important this is. While you heard at the outset that climate change was one of two project lenses, is we were writing our findings and looking back over what we had experienced here in Oregon in just the previous 12 months during which the plan was completed, we were faced with a stark picture of just why this was so important. Within the year that this plan was developed, catastrophic wildfires driven by increased drought and extreme weather events wiped out at least four towns and led to the death of 11 Oregonians, the loss of over 5,000 homes and businesses, the displacement of thousands of people in the midst of a pandemic, and the destruction of over 1.2 million acres of forest at a total estimated cost of over $1.15 billion. Heavy rains and snowmelt driven by unseasonably warm temperatures caused massive flooding in northeast Oregon, leading to the death of one Oregonian, hundreds of millions in damages, and the closure of one of the state's two major interstate corridors. More than 90% of the state was designated as being in severe drought, with 56% in extreme drought, and more than 17% in exceptional drought, the highest level used by the National Integrated Drought Information System. A record-shattering heat wave lasting more than three days hit the state, leading to the deaths of at least 116 Oregonians, what Multnomah County officials described as a, quote, "mass casualty event." In addition, we know from research by Portland State University's Dr. Vivek Shandis and others that the impacts of extreme weather and climate change are disproportionately borne by communities of color. It's important to make this connection because when we talk about our regional need to increase equity and inclusion, we must acknowledge the impact of climate change on these communities. So as these impacts have come into sharp focus, it's become clear that a conventional approach in planning our cities is no longer tenable, and so we've really striven to include thoughtful climate change mitigating design in what we've done. Next slide. So the concept plan incorporates greenhouse gas reductions from the ground up. We are increasing density, as you heard, doubling density, locating commerce and employment near housing. We're looking to incentivize smaller, more efficient housing units. We want to get to transit-supported development patterns. We want to protect those natural areas to help to mitigate some of those climate change impacts. We want to right-size our transportation infrastructure, and we want to make sure that we get to vehicle electrification and micro-mobility possibilities in our community plan. Next slide. So desired outcome five is that current and future generations enjoy clean air, clean water, and healthy ecosystems. This is inextricably tied to this previous desired outcome. The concept plan emphasizes protection of waterways and enhancement of wetlands to minimize flooding, improve water quality, and provide habitat. We've emphasized protection of significant tree growths, particularly native species, protection of habitat corridors, particularly those connected to the wildlife refuge, and minimizing impacts elsewhere. Next slide. Desired outcome six is that the benefits and burdens of growth and change are distributed equitably. So the plan, as you heard, was built with equity at the forefront. It furthers the city's anti-racism action plan. We built it consulting with, learning from, and lifting up the voices of members of our marginalized communities, including communities of color, and we have provided policy recommendations moving into the community plan that would promote economic and racial diversity in the neighborhood. Next slide. So that wraps our criteria. I'll end here that there is a reminder that, you know, what we're coming to the board with is a request from the City of Tigard that the Board of Commissioners provide a letter of support for the city's request to expand the urban growth boundary to develop River Terrace. So with that, next slide, I think we are into the question phase of this, and I, again, I have Sarah Breakstone here from OTAC who will help answer any questions that you have.
Well, first, let's see if we have any commissioner questions on what was-
Well, first, let's see if we have any Commissioner questions on what was presented. Commissioner Rogers or Commissioner Willie, anything at this juncture?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you to that presentation because it was very complex and very in-depth, and, um, it was good. Um, this wasn't the first time, obviously, that we have, uh, we were aware of this project, but, um, I just, congrats to the city of Tigard for the, um, for the amount of information they put together in this presentation. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, job well done. Very informative, very informative. Uh, Mr. Roberts, uh, do we have a draft letter, uh, to consider today, or will that be coming to us subsequently?
Yeah, our thought was we would, uh, listen to the comments that you have today and, uh, try to make sure that any questions have been answered, and then we will draft a letter and can bring that for your consideration, uh, as early as next Tuesday or potentially the following Tuesday if needed.
Okay, well, um, I will just add that, uh, I've been really impressed to see how the city of Tigard has gone about the, um, development and support for River Terrace One, if I can refer to it as that. Uh, and they continue to do the thoughtful planning moving forward for a whole variety of housing types and income levels in the community, including in this potential UGB expansion area. Uh, transportation funding continues to be one of, uh, local government's biggest challenges. Uh, and so we'll need to continue to, uh, work in partnership to ensure that we have of vibrant communities where our residents can get around to meet their everyday needs. So, I'll, you know, we clearly have more work to do together. That about, for me, sums it up. So, um, I'm, I'm pleased that the city has been very thorough in their pursuit of the requirements for this mid-cycle, um, expansion request. It is not on us to decide if, uh, they've satisfied the information need. That's something that the Metro Council uh, will need to go through themselves. Uh, but from, I think, a county level, uh, they've done a good job, and we need to continue to work together. Commissioner Rogers or Willie, is there anything else you would like to see that a draft support letter includes?
Two comments. Uh, one, I, as I told, uh, Mayor Snyder as well as developers, I'm, I'm in favor of the proposal, but I, I do have, Stephen, this is more for you than anybody else, a couple of concerns. One, I would be willing to commit some misstep, uh, money. That's just one vote here, but, uh, I think we need to fully understand and tease out what that commitment is because it, uh, it, it could be substantial, and I, uh, without a robust, uh, transportation plan, uh, you've got an enclave. For those who don't know the area, this is, this is enclave area that's going to present major problems to us in regards to Shoal, Ferry, Roy Rogers, unless there's some way to get out of this thing. So, meaning there's got to be other transportation, uh, alternatives. So we, we need to really look at that, and then again, as the chair pointed out, it's not for us to decide what Metro is going to determine, but, uh, we, we need to be careful that there is, there is a lot of inventory. They might disagree, uh, that hasn't quite been developed, uh, to a potential density in, in Tigard. So if that comes back at us, I, I would support them, meaning Tigard, and have some pushbacks to that, but they're, uh, uh, they've recently taken off some of their height limitations in the Triangle, which is helpful. Should have done that a few years ago, which would have added housing stock. But, uh, we, we may get that comment about, "Don't you have some undeveloped properties and lands?" And the answer is absolutely yes. Not enough to do what they need to do. That's, that's the answer, but I think we ought to be prepared to at least assist our partners if, if, if that, that occurs. So that's my comments.
Commissioner Willie, go ahead.
Yeah, and Roy, I, I certainly hear your, uh, concerns about, uh, the development of the infrastructure for a project of that size and certainly in that location. Um, but I think we have, you know, I remember, uh, the years of study and work that went into South Hillsborough, and then when it finally was brought into the boundary, uh, the significant costs that were, um, were the demands for, uh, putting in the right kind of infrastructure and, and all of that. And so, um, we, I think we have a pretty good example of, of how maybe some of those things could be funded, and, um, I'm sure that Tigard has, uh, looked into, uh, the South Hillsborough project and continues to, um, make sure, I guess, that they're taking everything into consideration as well. So, you know, I'm, um, I'm optimistic on these things. It does cost a lot of money, but it's certainly something that our region needs, and so I'm encouraging them to move ahead and let's work through all the details, and certainly encourage, um, Metro to approve this expansion.
And I think, um, Commissioners, a couple of things that we have identified at the staff level that we think would be appropriate for conditioning support would be just ensuring in the concept plan that the Tau Flat Road extension is, is articulated clearly in there. We believe that's a really important link in the transportation system, uh, in this area. And we're bringing forward a transportation system plan amendment that will actually include that alignment in the county transportation system plan. So we'd like to just ensure that we have a, a clear, firm commitment in the concept plan, that that, that roadway has been incorporated or considered in the plan. Uh, as, as we mentioned earlier, I think some additional work probably on our coordination around, um, cost share and responsibility for some of the transportation improvements, uh, will be important ongoing work. And then we, we've identified a few access management concerns along Roy Rogers and Beefend Road in terms of, uh, a number of local streets intersecting with, um, with those major arterials. So that's something that we'll continue to work with the city on to try to refine the plan and, and help address some of those kinds of issues. So I think if, if the board is supportive of moving forward with a letter with those caveats, we'll get that letter drafted, and we'll get it in front of you for consideration at your meeting next Tuesday.
That'd be great.
Okay, great.
That'd be great. Okay, well, I think that wraps it up on this topic. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Warner, Ms. Breakstone, and to the remainder of the City of Tigard team, as well as the mayor and the city council, and thank you to Washington County staff as well. Uh, before we, uh, take our intermission, uh, into our afternoon session, I want to, um, mention that Commissioner Treese will be out for the remainder of the day. Uh, given that, uh, with the permission of Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Willie, I'd like to, uh, convene with, uh, Ms. Calvert, as well as the policy assistants for, uh, Commissioner Phi and Commissioner Treese, and look at our afternoon schedule and which ones are more, uh, informational presentation and which ones, uh, necessitate a full board discussion uh, to see, uh, about proceeding for the remainder of the afternoon agenda. Does that sound like a reasonable next step?
Yeah, I, I do. I agree with that. I was going to ask you about how we would move ahead with that discussion on the, um, flavored tobacco, considering that, of course, Commissioner Phi was, is the, is the lead on that. Um, so yes, I would, I would certainly suggest that we consider, um, doing whatever we're allowed to do, but postpone that discussion.
Yeah, and it may be appropriate for some other ones, so, uh, stay tuned.
Okay, sounds good.
Are there, are there any, uh, I think having the homeless encampment program update would be, uh, would be very useful and timely, but we'll take a look at the other ones as well, uh, to see about that. Are there any that are burning a hole in your pocket that you want to make sure that we address today? No? Okay, alrighty. Well, thank you for that. Then, uh, we'll take a break, and at 10 o'clock, we'll convene as the Housing Authority Board of Directors, and then subsequent to that, our Board of Commissioners' business meeting. And Mr. Carr, uh, just want to make sure that, uh, I believe for the agenda for both of those meetings, but particularly for our business meeting, um, I don't see any items that necessitate having more than three of us there.
I do not, but I will double-check over the intermission to make sure.
Thank you very much. I, I know I can count on you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we'll see you, uh, back at 10 o'clock then. Thanks, everyone.